Okay. I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 7:00, May 14th. Can you call the roll, please?
Indeed. Pelzal?
Here.
Doden?
Here.
Stiles?
Here.
McQueen?
Here.
Donnell?
Here.
Also present is Planning and Zoning Administrator Denise Swinger and Village Solicitor Chris Conard.
Okay. So, I'm going to review the agenda. We're going to do the minutes for my last two meetings. Then we have a minor subdivision replat on the consent agenda. If we have questions or want to talk about that at all, we need to move it off the consent agenda and we'll discuss it normally. Right?
That's correct.
And then, we will do communications. We have two communications. Then council report, Mary Ann. Then we'll have citizens comments for anything that's not on the agenda. Then we have two public hearings, both conditional use applications. One from owners of 102 Pleasant Street and then the owners of 335 Orton Road. And we'll hear the staff report, talk to the applicant, then we'll open a public hearing and then we'll discuss it up here. Then we have some old business, minimum lot frontages, talking about RVs and tiny homes, RV parking, and discuss our work on the comprehensive land use plan and maybe talk about new business and agenda planning. And that's it? That's it? Okay. So, let's do the minutes from April 9th first. Does anyone have any changes for page one? Page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? Or page six?
I just have a change in the spelling of Michaela Grant, the intern's name. M-I-C-H-E-L-A.
M-I-C-H-E-L-A?
Yeah. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
With the...
With the change that Denise mentioned.
Yeah. You want to call that?
You can just voice vote that one, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. Any... Everyone, how do I do that?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstained? Okay. Next, the... We had a special work session for the comprehensive land use plan on Monday, April 24th. Does anyone see any...
Oh, because it was Tuesday. Thank you.
Oh, it was.
Change in person. Thank you.
Everyone okay with that? Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of the minutes on April 24th.
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. We were all there. That's that. Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Do you want to explain how that works real quick?
Sure. Items on the consent agenda if can simply move to Denise's purview if there's a motion to approve those items. If anyone has questions about them or feels they need to discuss it, you move it off the consent agenda and it goes on to your regular agenda. So, if there are no questions or concerns, you take a motion to approve, move through the vote process and you're done with it. If there are concerns or questions, you move it off the consent agendas and that takes a motion as well.
I move we approve.
I second. Do I just say...
You can voice vote that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's done. Next, communications. Do you want to talk about that?
Yes. The Housing Advisory Board, one of the things that they suggested was getting the Antioch proposal for the Pocket Neighborhood Development to the Planning Commission now. That is going to be coming up this year, maybe by the end of the summer. They've already submitted the beginnings of the replat. And then, we'll do rezoning as well as start that conditional use process maybe in the next few months. So, this is just for your information only, just to give you an idea of what they're looking at doing.
Denise, what streets? Because it doesn't say what street on the map that they provided.
It's on East North College.
East North College. And is it on a quarter?
It's at the corner of Livermore.
Livermore.
Livermore. Livermore?
Yeah.
This is Livermore.
Thank you.
Yeah, there aren't any buildings there now.
Council report?
Oh, the other thing. The other thing was the housing documents. Mary Ann, did you want to explain that? The three pieces of, just briefly, it's just for their information at this point, but...
Yes. There were three documents that I sent to Planning Commission. One was a cover page that went to Village Council just reviewing what had happened at the Planning Advisory Board and what we're suggesting as next steps, which is just giving a very brief outline of a potential housing initiative process. Then, the Housing Advisory Board created a summary of the community conversations on housing. That was a two-page document that really summarized, I think it did a good job of capturing the main issues that came up during the community conversations on housing, both what people saw as trends, what concerns they had about the trends, what they liked, what they didn't like, and what people's suggestions were for the type of housing that we most need, would like to see. So, there's that. And then, at the last council meeting, council had a first reading of six ordinances that have come from Planning Commission that are basically clarifying texts in each instance. And then, at the next council meeting, they will have a second reading. So, does anyone have any questions about either the housing initiative process, where it stands, or the ordinances?
No, I don't. Thank you for updating us about the things.
I'll send, whatever comes to council about housing, I'll send on to Planning Commission.
Okay. So, we've done communications and council report. Now, if anyone has anything they want to say that's about something that's not on the agenda for tonight, you can come up and talk about it now. If not...
I just like, I noticed that, I think there are a few people here who are interested in the Antioch Pocket Neighborhood. Just so you understand, we aren't actually discussing it tonight. Just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Yeah. That was part of the communications that we received, correct?
So, if there's something that they'd like to say about it, now would be the time.
If you would like to say something during citizens' comment, they're welcome to do so.
Thank you.
And so, just state your name.
My name is Patricia Brown and I really didn't come prepared to say anything, but I just wanted to say that I'm very excited that Antioch College is moving forward to doing the Pocket Neighborhood and that it's going to be small homes, eight four-bedroom, four one-bedrooms and four two-bedrooms. And the one-bedrooms will be attached. Also, I think to me, another very exciting part of it is that its intent is to make this as environmentally sustainable as the laws of Ohio will allow. We would very much like to have zero net energy and that, of course, is doable, but we would also like to have net zero water, which would be a big step forward because the Ohio laws are not written to support that at this point in time. So, anyway, I just would encourage this, all your support in making this happen. It's been a long dream for a lot of us and it's also been, might be a big boost to Antioch College whose mission is to have, support and develop environmental sustainability. And this would be a big part of their mission. Thank you.
Thank you. That was actually very enlightening. Anyone else? So, next, we can, we're going to talk about the conditional use application. It's not me either. Okay.
102 Pleasant.
At 102 Pleasant.
Carol Gifford. She's here, present. She and Daniel Murfeld, is he present? He's not. Okay. Have submitted an application for a conditional use hearing for an accessory dwelling unit. They purchased the home at 102 Pleasant Street. It does not have a garage, so they are going to build an accessory structure, a garage, but they would like to also have an accessory dwelling unit upstairs. So, that does mean that they have to come for this hearing. They are on a corner lot, so they had setbacks on both sides, 20 feet, they, which was not a problem. They meet all of the setback requirements, the lot coverage requirements, the parking requirements for this. And they, everything that is required in the conditional application, they have met those conditions. Anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Denise?
Yeah, I do. On the site plan, it shows that the setback is off of the property that's beyond what looks to be like an abandoned alley or an easement that is contiguous to the properties to the left. And I'm not sure where that property is.
Yeah, it does look kind of weird. You said there was a 20-foot setback just now. This says 10.
Yeah. And I think that the property owner can address that because she told me that the drawings were a little off, but that they had measured that it was 20 feet from the property line. Maybe, Carol?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Because you have like, the two vehicles like, look like they're over the property line rather than...
So, if you look on the map, if you look on the map, there's two indications. One's two and 5/8ths and one's two and 7/8ths and those are supposedly both the same feet. I can't remember. I don't have it in front of me. 70-something feet. And so...
78.75.
Thank you. So, every other dimension on the map matches the longer one. So, that two and 5/8ths is, it seems incorrect and that the property line looks like it probably continues from that property on Walnut Street. Does that make sense?
I think it's the back.
Well, Ted was talking about the back, actually.
Alley is it abandoned?
So, see how the property lines are?
Yeah. So, what's the question?
The question is that, you know, like, does your, does your property like extend, what is this?
That's all her property.
That's all your property.
Yeah. It's a flag-shaped property, so.
Oh, okay.
Because it had been an abandoned alley.
So, that whole strip goes with your property?
Yes.
What's the term you used?
Flag-shaped property?
Oh, flag.
Flag-shaped.
Yeah, yeah.
It's shaped like a flag. Does that answer your question, Ted?
Well, yeah, but it raises questions now. I mean, in essence, I'm not quite sure if there's a, if there's an access easement or a property line all the way down that doesn't let the properties attached in the back.
It's all one property. That, it doesn't look, because she has that 24 by 24 picture over there, if you would go on GIS, it's just all, there is no property line across there. That whole, her property is all of that, what was possibly an alley at one point, as well as behind the other people's.
Then why does all of the lots say 150 feet?
Well, that's the, that's going that direction dimension.
So, she's saying this to here is 150 and this to here is 150. I mean, I think that's probably just sort of part of how GIS is saying it.
We can't go on supposition. We can't give approvals based on supposition. If there's a survey that delineates the property lines so that we can determine whether or not they fit proper setbacks, that's what our board is for. You know, I can't look at a GIS map and say that this is meaningless.
Okay. So, we can make a condition that they have to provide that or they have to bring that forward closer to the house. They have plenty of room to do it.
Yeah, there is room.
Yeah. They've got plenty of room, so.
Yeah, please do.
Inspector the property.
Can you state your name?
I'm Bob Swainy. That photograph that you have that they overlay is on, that is the GIS photograph and the yellow lines are the property lines according to the county GIS. Now, we've found pins at the three locations. We did not find a pin all the way down that alley. We didn't think that that was pertinent and it really is unusual that they've attached this alley. In fact, I've been talking with Carol. I said, "You should abandon that and give the property to the local owners so that they can pay the taxes on it instead of you because it's useless." And there is no easement over it. It has all been paved. There's no easement of record on the deed. And that pin is visible on the front corner of the lot and on that corner, on the adjacent corner there down Walnut Street. And the pin, the other pin on the other corner of the front of the house on Pleasant Street. We did find those. But there has not been a survey recently.
Well, I mean, it does seem that there is enough room. At the same time, we want to ensure that we, that it's clear where the property line is. So, what...
It needs to be 10 feet from that property line.
Yeah.
From that pin.
Well, is the pin, the property line pin or is it what?
Have you confirmed that that pin is, you know, there should be a survey if there's a pin at the county?
I have not seen a previous survey yet. But we did discover a pin.
Do you have a deed with the coordinates?
Sorry, I didn't record my deed.
Okay. You want to keep going and then come back to us?
To us?
Keep going?
Okay.
We'll open a public hearing before we would make a motion. It'll get additions on our approvals.
Sounds good?
Yes, sounds fine.
Okay. So, now, I'm going to open a public hearing. Anyone who would like to comment on this conditional use application, please come forward and state your name. Okay. Hearing none. Going to close the public hearing and bring it back up to us.
I would make a motion that we approve the application with the following condition, that the owner submit a deed that describes the property boundaries and resubmits a site plan for the record showing that the accessory dwelling unit is within the setback requirements based on that deed.
Okay. You made a motion? You seconded it? Okay.
Let Judy get that down and she'll read it back to us. I'm going to have to do this a couple of times just to get it straight. So, your motion is to approve the conditional use application contingent upon submittal of a deed describing the property boundaries and resubmission of a, well, and a new site plan that indicates that the accessory dwelling unit slash garage is within the 10-foot setback or outside of the 10. I'm not sure you...
Within the setbacks.
Within the setbacks.
I have a question, I guess, before we vote. And Ted, you may know the answer to this and Denise. If a survey is done, that would be of the entire property, because once you have an abandoned alley, I understand, you have to have a survey done and have it filed with the county. Would it then remove all of these yellow lines and show that as one property or would it keep these yellow lines?
You're saying if you, that would, they'd have to replat that, giving that to those other owners right now. Probably what you'll find at Green County is a survey. When it was done, I don't know, but there'd be a survey that would show how it is right now.
So, the alley, even though it's theirs, if it's not replatted, is it actually then a part of this property?
They're paying, yeah.
There still is.
They're paying for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Which is unusual. I haven't seen that before.
You know, and the reason that, the reason that this board has to have a document that's official is because if a, if by chance you start to build and the neighbor then complains and we approve something that isn't accurate, which a GIS map is not accurate, then we are subject to liability as well as you. And so, we have to make sure and ensure that those legal documents are in place for our approvals.
I suspect what happened was that there was one family that owned, I mean, family members owned both of these houses and the house on the corner was the one that requested the alley vacation and so it went with that house. But I think both houses were owned by members of the same family, I believe.
So, they probably actually have like 165 feet along that property line. It was just never incorporated in or 157 and a half if the other property owner received it off the other side, but I don't think that's the case.
You know, another thing that happens that you might consider is that if the adjacent property owner were to submit an application for an accessory unit on their property, you know, if that 10 foot is where it is, then you're really kind of taking the opportunity for them to use a bigger backyard because the setback would go from your property line and then that would be their setback. So, you know, I don't know what advantage there is to owning that, but I think you could probably swing a pretty good deal with that adjacent property owner to deed them overtime.
Yeah. Okay. So, we have a motion on the table. And was Doden a second on that?
Yes.
Yes.
I did have a...
Yes.
Yeah, you, so you, you guys are ready to call the roll if you are...
Yes.
In fact, ready.
Please call the roll.
Indeed.
All right. Doden?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Donnell?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Pelzal? Yes. Okay. That was great. Okay. So, next, we have a conditional use application from Stephen and Stacy Wirig, owners of 335 Orton Road, seeking approval for an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. This application for a conditional use hearing is for a pool house. When the architect submitted the drawing, the pool house meets the criteria of an accessory dwelling unit, so therefore it's a conditional use hearing and letters were sent to neighbors and was publicly noticed. This pool house will also have a swimming pool and they are wanting to, we do now have a swimming pool requirement, which is a permitted use. It's not a conditional use, but because this is a relatively new addition to our zoning code, I would like council's input on the type of protective cover that they want to use and regular fencing that would go around. So, anyway, as far as the accessory dwelling unit goes, again, they, they met the lot coverage. They are far enough away from the side yard and way far away from the rear and the front, obviously. So, they, the height of the dwelling unit is 10 feet. The size does not exceed the maximum allowed. I think that's pretty much it. Yeah. And I think my only concern with and what I would like to hear a little bit more, obviously if there's anybody that has any concerns, I also want to make sure like the lighting, the direct cut-off fixtures illuminating from the, any reflections from the pool also needs to be reflected away from the adjoining properties as well as talking about the pool cover.
So, do we want to hear from the applicant?
Sure.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, want to say? Okay. So, do we have any questions for the applicant or Denise before we open up a public hearing?
I guess I have a couple of questions in terms of the pool cover. Because right now, do we have a requirement with the pool that you have a fence?
Yeah. We never ever had anything before and as you know, we added that in.
It says, "Or other protective device."
Yeah. So, we have that, that other protective device. And it's really kind of fall, it definitely falls under that. Part of the pool house itself and the house itself can, can also be a part of the barrier around that pool. But yes, the pool, the pool cover is, as I included the information on that, it's a new technology. I don't know how council feels about that or if they still would prefer to have some fencing. It's...
Well, the question I have, and I guess it's for you, is, so obviously there's a switch that you, or something that will cause the cover to go, to retract and then to go back. Where is that switch?
It's a keypad with a code that you can...
A keypad with a code. Okay. And where is that located?
You can mount it for everyone.
Okay. Because, you know, I don't have so much of a problem when I was reading with, you know, that you can stand on this cover, but, you know, I guess my biggest concern is young children. Because I feel like once you're bigger, you sort of know what you're doing and things will happen. But it's young kids. So, I was thinking about, okay, adults are really good about pushing the button or whatever to get it to close, but if you had then a bunch of kids that are out swimming and that and they're sort of in charge, and then what happens if they don't close it? Then you have... Then you have, where a fence, you always have that right there.
So the issue with fences when they're.
Can you come up to the mic, please?
The, the issue that this addresses that a fence doesn't is when it's, when the fence is incorporated to the house, which is the way ours would be if we were required to have a fence, is kids can still come through the house.
Sure.
So the advantage of this is at one touch in 45 seconds it closes and it's a personal, like a four-pin keypad. So you keep that secret, nobody can get into it.
I was wondering, does it, does it have like a motion detector or something? So that if you forget to key it off, does it automatically?
It doesn't, for safety reasons, because you don't want it to close somebody in underneath.
But you also don't want to forget to close it.
You don't, like forgetting to close a gate.
Right.
Same thing. And so, so the, you know, the listed advantage is there's a lot of material on it. Most codes are starting to allow it.
They technically have to be self-closing.
Technically. Right. Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of material on it. Most, most municipalities are starting to allow them, because they actually consider them safer than fences, because they completely close the water barrier to the outside. So there's no intrinsic, I want, I see the water, I want to get in it. So we've been pool owners before, we had a fence attached to our house. Our kids were a lot younger then, we worried every single day about them getting through that door. So we're actually much more comfortable with this as a barrier. We truly don't want anybody.
Unless somebody knows the code.
Sure.
They can't come in in the middle of the night, he goes swimming in your pool.
That's correct. The neighbors are upset about that.
Right.
I don't think that this is a zoning issue. I think that our zoning code is clear that we require a fence or protective device. That's where it lays. The real issue is with either the health department or the building department is whether or not they're going to allow this as a protective device. And I don't know which, probably the building department.
Yeah, I don't know if the building department, it would have to be the building department, because the health department doesn't regulate private pools anymore. If they had did it one time, they don't anymore. And so that's why we put it into the zoning code. The only thing that they regulate now are public.
Well, um.
I mean, it's a life safety issue. And zoning codes aren't going to delve into life safety issues, you know, that's what the building code is all about. You know, so I think frankly, as long as it meets one of these two criterias, we, we're good to go.
Okay. I, I think it falls within the, the code, the, what we added, you know, to the zoning code, it, "or other protective device." And, you know, it, we, we do have pools in town that don't have fences, correct? And.
And was that before there was a?
Yeah. We, this is the first time we've actually used this, so it's exciting. So I, I'm in favor of it. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, if that's okay with you guys?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing. If, you know, you have three minutes, come up to the mics, state your name. And this is for the pool and the pool house.
Wait, can I get a clarification on that? Is the pool permitted and the pool house, is the conditional use?
The conditional use is for the pool house.
Yes, the conditional use is for the pool house. If anyone wants to talk about fence versus.
Well, but I think you've just made a determination that the.
Okay.
You're good on the protective covering, so the only issue at hand right now is the pool house.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have, can you come up?
Yes, my name is Ted Barker and I live next door. And my thoughts are the pool house and not the pool. Is the pool house a permanent use, 12-month-a-year house? Or is a conditional use for swimming people only? As I looked at it, the house, it looks like it's a year-around type permanent structure made for year-round use and not for just summer swimming, that type of thing. I don't know, so that's what I need to find out. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a accessory dwelling units and they are a year-round structure.
So my question is, how does that impact on surrounding housing? Meaning you're, you're building a house, two houses on one lot?
You're building an accessory dwelling unit.
What's the difference between accessory and a permanent house?
Well, I'm not sure as far as billing codes, maybe Ted, you can answer that. But it is definitely in size, it's not, it can only be 66% of the.
Yeah, and it, in the rewrite, and I'll give you history. In the rewrite of the zoning code, every lot in town is permitted to have an accessory structure and/or an accessory dwelling unit, which does in fact give everybody the right to have two residences on each lot. There are restrictions regarding how that access, what qualifies it as an accessory versus a primary structure. The house is the primary structure and utilities have to go through the house to the accessory dwelling unit or the accessory structure. So that's what classifies it as. But in all intent and purpose, it is another house on the lot.
That, also the size. It has to be no bigger than 800 square feet or half of the existing primary structure, whichever is smaller, I think.
Which can be useful time. 24/7.
Yes.
Yes, it can be rented out.
Rented out.
Can be a granny apartment, can be permanently rented. It can be there for when people have relatives to come or whatever.
Yeah, and it comes through us so that we see the plan and we make sure, and staff make sure that it follow, it makes all of those condition, meets all of those conditions.
But someone could live there 365?
Yes, as long as it meets the conditions, it is conditionally allowed.
Okay, thank you.
So can it be Airbnb?
Here, can someone? Thank you.
I'm curious, can that accessory residence then, can you rent it out like Airbnb, which is very popular these days?
And I'm sorry, can you give your name, please?
Patrick Hemminger.
Thank you.
I'm all, I'm a couple of doors up on Orton Road.
Um, yes, you can.
Yeah, council actually just recently passed ordinance about short-term rentals. So we had a long discussion here. We made a recommendation to council just recently about that and the decision by council was.
It's, it has a definition now.
Yeah.
Transit guest lodging. 30, it has to be less than 30 days. It is basically a short-term rental.
But just, just to clarify.
Registered.
That would be a different hearing.
That would be a different hearing, yes.
Yeah, they haven't applied to do that, but if it's a long-term rental, they're allowed to do that. As long as the utilities go through the main house.
So if at any point they want to use that as a, what is often called Airbnb, they would have to come back to planning commission?
And you would be notified.
Well, no, not anymore. They used to have to come back to planning commission. I'm sorry, is it permitted use now? They have to be registered.
Yeah.
They have to be registered.
Thank you. We were asking for it to be, yeah.
Just to register means just file a form and.
Correct.
Then they can do it.
Yes.
And pay taxes. You pay a lodging tax.
Yes, and they pay a lodging tax.
Well, I think we could. Thank you. I'll just say that when the council passed that, it passed me, I'm sorry. I wasn't aware that I was already a legal thing to build a second house on a property.
It's interesting because when I was looking at the past zoning code, accessory dwelling units were even in the old code, but they didn't have quite the number of regulations that they do now. Specifically being, they can't be separately metered. It used to be able to be and oftentimes people would then carve those out into other lots and you, you find that around town. It wasn't, I did find it in the, prior to the 2013 code. Now, access, the, the Airbnb thing is another layer where you can use that and as Ted said, it's just simply, it is a registration process and then you have a tax, a lodging tax.
I, I'll say a little, as a council member, most people, I think, in the village know that the issue of affordability has come up as one of the most important issues right now. And clearly housing, it's housing costs that is the big driver of that. So the village government is, has really been encouraging people to build accessory dwelling units, particularly for a long-term rental. The issue of Airbnb could become an issue, maybe it already has. And if it has, then I think it has to come back to planning commission and council to revisit it. But given that historically the village has not wanted to expand its borders, the reason why housing has become so expensive is because people want to live here and we have the market at work. So if we can have infill development, which is what accessory dwelling unit is, hopefully that can help absorb some of the need for moderate rental units. This particular structure isn't necessarily that, it has other purpose, I guess, but.
We intended it to be a piece of our house, but. On this state, Stacy, I sit here talking about, the intent of this is to completely be a piece of our home. So our home only has three bedrooms, we have two kids and us, so it gives us a spare bedroom and a spare family room. And if you look at the site plan, the way it's incorporated, the intent is no long-term rentals. Yes, we'll have guests that stay there. Who does with it when we don't own that house anymore, I don't know. But, but I think everybody knows you can Airbnb a bedroom in your house too. So I think that issue you guys will have to deal with at some point.
My name is Ken Strohing. One of the things I'd like for you to address, Denise, is you talk about the metering and I think a lot of people are not necessarily understanding of, of what you're talking about. I mean, you're, you're talking about separate, the sewer from, for that dwelling, for this, this case, sewer has to come from the house, can't, can't be attached to the, to the, to the village system directly. Water has to come from the house, can't come from the village system directly.
Correct.
As does the electric. So I think one of the concerns that some of the people have that have, that expressed their concern to me is that is, accessory, how many accessory buildings can be built on a piece of property? So I think possibly explaining that to people clearer would help out.
Yeah, accessory dwelling units, you can only have one accessory dwelling unit and it can only be for a single-family dwelling. And that is in your residential districts.
Only one unit?
Only one accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
And it has to, you can't put an accessory dwelling unit with a, with a two-family or a single-family attached or apartment building. It can only be with a single-family dwelling. And it can only be one, one accessory dwelling unit.
Can you come up, please?
Ms. Barker, we live next door to these people. To put it crassly, I think what a lot of us are concerned about is what does it do to our property values? I know you can only offer an opinion, but I'd like to hear it.
It would increase.
Seriously?
Yeah. When the state, when the county auditor goes to re-audit that property, they're going to value it for having that accessory dwelling unit and up that property value pretty significantly. Happened to me last week.
Well, but I think you're concerned about your property value. And as, as far as I know, first of all, I think if you've been around Yellow Springs, you know you have half-million-dollar houses beside $150,000 houses. As far as I know, there has never been anything demonstrated, unless you have a house that's clearly deteriorating, that a neighboring property is decreasing the neighbor's property. So this is, I, I truly can't imagine that this would decrease your property value.
Any other citizens' comments? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to us.
I have one question for the applicant. On the site plan, you show a boundary around the pool that connects to the accessory dwelling unit. Is that a new fence or is it just some landscaping feature? This.
It's a concrete berm that matches this, it's basically a bench.
Okay.
Did, did we answer Ken Strohing's question? Did I, was I oblivious to that?
Yes.
Did we answer that?
I don't have any questions.
Do we hear? Well, did you, did, we don't have a motion.
You can close the public hearing.
I already did that.
I move approval of the conditional use request for the pool house accessory dwelling unit.
I'll second that.
Okay. Stiles?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Dodon?
Yes.
Pelzow?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, we're gonna take, how much, five-minute break? A five-minute break. We're gonna do some old business after the break.
But Ken is building.
Oh, okay.
He was putting their minds at ease, they said.
Okay, now we get into the weeds.
Yes. Okay. So next, we're doing minimum lot frontages. Yay. Denise?
So there's this section of the code that says, "Any lot created after the effective date of this code shall have frontage on an improved public street or approved private street or access easement equal to the minimum required lot width in the zoning district in which it is located." In the past, when I've, we had one particular property that came up with this issue. I worked with Jessica and we came up with the idea that it had to basically, the access easement, if it was a shared driveway, what, you know, from the front to the back, that, that lot, that was, this was actually a lot that already exists, existed. We weren't creating a lot, which is maybe a little bit different than what this is saying. That that particular one needed to at least have frontage on that lot, on that one, that landlocked lot. And it did. So they did a access easement shared driveway from the lot in the front to get to the landlocked lot in the back, which was Exhibit A. If you can see that, then the easement basically ran along that section of the 109.49 feet and they had to have 40 feet of frontage and they had 41.02 before it ends. So they had just enough to be able to access this, this property here, which is landlocked. This one right here, which is.
Is that property?
In between the two, it's, it's in between a, like. Exhibit A.
And so this is their, how they.
You have that big 41.02. Next time we get printouts from GIS, can we put lot numbers on it?
Sure, please, thanks.
Sure.
So that one's already been approved?
That one, yes.
Okay, I have a.
That was, yeah, and that was, that was an existing landlocked lot that they just, and he owned both of the properties, so he just put an easement to be able to get to that one in the back.
To unlock it.
To unlock it.
And so the easement is, I guess, is this area right here?
No, it's on the red.
It's on the red.
It's an easement.
You can't see it.
Oh, okay, and easement there, so we can't. Oh, okay, and easement there, so we can't see it, but it's right there.
But, he had, he, he had to make it 20 feet wide because utilities wanted five feet. We made this, like a 12 to 15-foot driveway and the utilities wanted two to three feet on each side for water sewer. They wanted it to be separate going to the back, going to that landlocked lot.
I'm getting confused then, because I, I read about the 20 feet. Because this says equal to minimum required lot width.
Yes.
Right.
In the zoning. So, what is the minimum lot width?
Forty there.
Forty. So, wouldn't the easement have to be 40 feet, then?
He had 40 feet of frontage on the, on his, on the lot and he has 41.02.
Oh, he does, okay, on Corey Street, okay.
But the easement just has to be a right-of-way sort of easement, like, kind of access easement.
Yeah, but I mean...
Well, where is that 40 feet? Is that 40 feet has to go to...
It's right here.
That's all it has to be?
Essentially.
It has to go all the way from the street, though. It had to go all the way from the street.
Okay, so then...
So, it really had to go 109.49 feet and 40 feet. So, it should have cut this red lot and have...
So, then it goes down here, then, right?
Right.
To Corey Street. Okay, that's the thing I was questioning.
But that's fine.
So, it also goes down here, okay.
So, basically... So, so the easement, here was the, the easement was like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, what are you saying about that?
Well, okay, so that's one example, I mean, just kind of giving you different examples.
But that was what was necessary to get access to that...
That already existing lot.
Right.
That's an already existing lot, okay. The second, Exhibit B, on Livermore Street, you have to have 60-foot frontage. He has, if you look behind the red lot, the red-marked lot, directly behind it, he has a little lot, 64.50 by 91. It has 60 feet, if we're interpreting it that way, it has the 60 feet of frontage. Now, if you, if you do a multiplier of the size of that lot...
Wait a minute, stop right there, it does not have 60-foot of frontage because that property line, 60 feet, is not on the public right-of-way.
Right, but if you did an access easement off of Livermore, a road that goes back there, he would, he would have that 60 feet. Is there an access easement?
There isn't now, I mean, he's asking, he wants to do that.
But he also has enough property on Livermore that he could make that 60 feet for that piece.
Right.
Yes.
And still be within the proper frontage, because there's 100, almost 200 feet there.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and actually Denise, in your writing about Exhibit B, you, and maybe this was just a typo, you said that the lot was, on Livermore was 119.75.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it's 199.
Oh, okay, because that's another one, that's, sorry, that's actually, I must have been thinking about the one on Allen Street. Yeah, so he has 100, so the reason I had Exhibit B, if you see Exhibit B2, the other option that he could technically do, I think Ted, you had mentioned this. He could technically go 60 feet off, if you look at B2, he could go 60 feet and then go in and then go back to that, 60 feet, and then he wouldn't have to own any of that. He, he would be basically making, that person would own that, yes.
Weirdly shaped parcel.
And the width of that, if it becomes, well, let me, let me go back. There's nothing in our code that dictates what the shape of a lot is. You can have property lines that go any which way you want. It can be curved, it can be anything it wants. What we dictate is frontage, access, and the reason for the frontage, minimum frontage within a residential district is to maintain density issues in that district. So, they're defined by frontage. Then they're defined by size of lot. So, those two things combined are what's minimum to create a lot. If somebody has a large parcel and they want to subdivide it, as long as they can get frontage on them, on the main drag, on the public right-of-way, then they can have any shape they want. So, what dictates the width and they have to be able to maintain setbacks. So, the, if they want to narrow that frontage down to a lane, that lane has to meet the minimum setbacks, side yard setbacks in combination for the width to meet the side yard setbacks. So, in the district, if the, the combined setbacks are 25 feet, 15 and 10 maybe, or whatever, but combined setbacks are 25 feet, then that's got to be the minimum lane width to get to the flag. That's how it would be interpreted.
So, this, the Livermore Street one could be 60 feet, narrow to 20 or whatever it is.
It's 20, because it's 10 is the max.
And then go back.
On both sides.
And then be whatever it wants.
I'm sort of missing something. And comparing it to the one on Corey Street, which allowed, what, that, that was an easement that went back there. So, why can't they just put an easement back to this property?
He just doesn't want to own the land. He doesn't want to maintain, he doesn't want to own the land and he doesn't want to maintain a big road like that, a big, long road.
Got it.
Responsible for it.
Got it. Okay.
So, this one, the B, which has the V1 or whatever it is, it had, yeah, B2, it has this strange little thing, but this is, actually would be their drive, how they access there? And so, but they wouldn't be responsible for maintaining it?
No, they are, they are, this is a lot.
So, so this is what, on B, what he would have to do is maintain this 60 feet and then he could narrow it to 20.
I'm talking about this one.
I know, but because of what that is...
Applying that logic to...
To this. That way, this house is separate from...
Why not just make it a flag lot and have the width be 25 feet or whatever?
Yeah, that's what, because it has to have 60 here.
So, what?
It has to be 60 foot.
At the street.
Minimum on a street.
But, but truly, what difference is that going to make? I mean, if we're going to make a lot back here, what difference is it going to make whether it...
And this is actually an existing lot, so if not, we're making it, we're not creating it.
Whether they own 60 feet of the frontage and then we do this gerrymandering thing to get it smaller and then bigger? As opposed to just...
He doesn't want to sell that much of the property.
No, no, I'm saying, why not make a flag lot and just have the new, the owner of that landlot...
Well, it does have to be 60 down here.
Why?
Because that's the requirement.
Why, why do we have that requirement, why don't we change that requirement?
So, because the, the zoning code, so, we changed that requirement because of what Ted said about maintaining... Obviously, this is a way to get around sort of the reason for that, right? But, the thing is, we don't have, the only requirements for the shape of a, of a property line is the setbacks. We could add requirements, but this is not, this is not breaking any rules.
Yeah, but we could have a rule that says, if you have a landlocked parcel, you can have a flag lot with a 20-whatever road that you own that goes back to that lot. Then it's, then only for landlocked parcels.
Existing landlocked parcels.
Then you would have to go back to the zoning code and change every district to allow 20-foot of frontage in every district.
I mean, but then anyone...
For landlocked parcels.
No.
No, that's what I'm saying, only for landlocked parcels.
Frontage is frontage. You can, you can call it whatever you want, but an access road easement isn't frontage. It's, doesn't, it's not frontage. So, we would have to re-def, put a new definition to each district on what we would require as minimum frontage.
For, for...
Because anyone could do that.
Landlocked parcels.
But what we're saying is, like, a landlocked parcel could be... That really opens up what's...
I mean, if we don't do that, then we're going to have this gerrymandering thing, which is ridiculous, I think, but...
But it would then permit, for example, me selling off the back half of my property, creating a landlocked parcel and then doing that, which then would happen all over the place, which...
Well, it wouldn't happen all over the place, but to the degree it did, that's what we want.
Anyone could then do it and that is a major shift in the thinking around why the zoning code does what it does, so that's...
Well, I mean, we have to have a major shift in our thinking if we're going to deal with affordable housing.
If that's the case, then we have to make the argument that we eliminate the density in districts and have one residential district with a 20-foot frontage, period. And that, that's a discussion that is much broader than what we have here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to that theory.
I mean...
But, like, to solve...
Let me, let me just say, let's put a pin in that for a second and just go to Exhibit C because now that takes you kind of to that next thing that she was bringing up. Exhibit C, and Chris Till is here, he actually is the owner of this. For some reason, the, these were plotted out at 25 foot frontages.
That's what they did in that...
I don't know why, but I'm not sure why.
That's what it was in the old part of town, I think.
So, you know, what Chris would like to do, right now, Chris technically, I guess, could do a, an access easement, he could do a replat, replating the three parcels into two with a road access easement possibly. But he's, if you think he could do that. Because the frontage that he needs to have is 50 feet. So, he, if you replatted that, he'd have 75 feet frontage. And he would, he wanted, he has all this room in the back that could be another lot. Okay, and he could do an access easement off of that 75-foot frontage.
And do 20 feet on that...
On, I think it's all, I think he has to have a total of 15, actually, in that, for both sides in residential B. And then, he has the 50-foot frontage, he'd have to have the 50-foot frontage in, in the lot in the back. What he couldn't do, but I think he'd like to do, is kind of what Mary Ann is saying and...
Is have a flag lot.
Yeah, I mean, that's what he's asked me, which, you know, it can't, we can't do that. We don't have that in the code. We may not want to have it.
Have a flag lot with just the 25.
Yeah, we don't have, right, we don't, we don't have that in the code.
So, so with the question, I understand the flag lot is raising a flag. But, he could do an access easement and then split off a back, is that, he could do that?
Well, it's how we're interpreting...
I mean, but we need, but it's supposed to have...
In order to do, in order to create a lot, you have to have an access easement. According to way this is reading.
Yeah.
That's equal to the minimum.
According to the way that this is reading, it says that equal to, the access easement equal to minimum required lot width.
Right.
If, so if the district says a minimum frontage is 50 feet, he has to find 50 feet on that 75 feet times two, which means he can't do it, to create a flag lot.
Said another way, that the question would be, okay, because an easement can be shared.
Yes.
So, it, we're not, this, the way this is written, one can argue that it doesn't allow shared or overlap. Because it would be...
Because it's a new lot.
Because it would be joint, it would be, you know, an easement could be jointly used. So, with 75 feet, you could have 50 and then a 25-foot access easement plus the other 25. The question would be is whether or not the code contemplates that as it is currently written.
Why can't you have an access easement that goes straight back along the eastern side and curves and probably goes all the way over, goes west, and it's a curved access easement and you get 50 feet?
Because it's not frontage on the right-of-way.
Well, we're not, you don't have to have frontage on the right-of-way. You have to have frontage on the access easement. Well, then how come we, how come Corey Street was okay? That landlocked parcel didn't, doesn't have frontage on the...
A here.
Right, 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 right.
To the access easement.
Here, here's the 40 feet right here.
Yeah.
It's not on the road.
Well, see, I wouldn't, certainly, I don't interpret it as being permissible, but...
It was, I mean, I guess it was, was it permitted?
So, Exhibit A was permitted, correct?
Denise showed, for A, I thought she showed the easement was right here.
It is, it runs this whole length.
Yeah, so that...
But, what it's saying is that the property itself has to have 40 feet along the access easement and here it is, right here.
Okay.
So, I'm saying, just have an access easement for him.
And it had to have 40 feet here on Corey?
No.
Yes.
The easement, yes.
Well, oh, the easement itself?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, it did mean, but the easement isn't 40 feet, but you mean it has to be...
But it goes to, this easement on Corey Street, it is only, is 20 feet at Corey Street, right?
Yes, and that was, that was not a creating of a lot.
But the easement is just...
Already an existing lot.
Yeah, so that's an existing lot, this is creating a new lot. That was solving a problem of a landlocked lot on Win, on Centra College. This would be a...
You'd be, this would be creating a new landlocked lot.
Yeah, so, yeah, with the access easement. Do we want to talk about Exhibit D before, Chris obviously has been raising his hand, but I don't know if we're ready to open the public hearing.
D was, sorry. Okay, this, she wanted to create a...
She wanted to create, the question was how much frontage, did she want to create a lot in the back of the property?
Yeah, and she wanted, and she wanted to be able to have it be like Exhibit B2, where you kind of go, and then back and then back to that. The problem is, you have to have, if she, I mean, she wanted to be separate. So, then you'd have to have 120, because this is NRA, she'd have to have 60 and 60.
Yeah, and she doesn't have enough frontage.
But, the question then becomes, can that person go for a variance of two and a half feet?
I think there'd be a pretty legitimate argument that they could. You know, I mean, that's, I think that there's some gray area regarding the frontage. And I'm not trying to make an argument for whether we should or should not allow flag lots. I'm, I'm simply interpreting the code as it's written and what it would take to change that code if we wanted to do away with minimum lot frontages per lot. Because that is a huge issue in the zoning code.
Well, if we set that aside, the flag lot thing, can we come back to the access easement then? Because to me, Exhibit C, access easement creating another lot.
I don't see that we have any way through the statement that every lot has a minimum frontage requirement. Dimension by dimension, per district.
Because it would require, it would require 100 for the two lots. And there's only 75.
I think it was, I don't think, I mean, it says after this...
Not with an access easement.
I think it may have been...
Access would require 50.
So, could the access easement actually come back and then turn and then they would have 50 feet of frontage on the access easement for a lot back there? That's the only way to get that, or, you know, that would be silly.
Did this statement appear before?
You mean prior to 2013?
Prior to the 2013, I, I don't know why I keep thinking it did, but...
I've never, I mean, in my experience, I mean, my experience has been to interpret frontage exactly what I said. In everywhere I've worked, it doesn't matter.
See, and I totally agree with you on the... See, and I totally agree with you on the fact that with, on the, with the fact that i- if you're separating them out as its own lot. I think where I'm hung up on is if it's an access easement and the person in the front owns every bit of it. What, and as long as they have the frontage, then would it mean the same?
I think that's applicable to districts that permit doubles.
Well, if they own.
Or higher density per lot. But on RA, a single-family residential lot, it's different than RB, which allows doubles and quads or whatever, higher densities. So that's where I think that applies.
Well, I mean, this really, this, if we were to do stuff like this, this would pretty much eliminate accessory dwelling units.
No, because you could, you could overlay this property with a pocket neighborhood and still, and develop it into four or five accessory dwelling units. So I don't know that that is an accessory dwelling unit. You could easily do that.
Before five, before five.
What I'm saying is, would people want to do this instead of making an accessory dwelling unit? Separate their property into two lots if it, if they have enough property? And create a second lot that they don't necessar- you know, that they could part with and then it wouldn't be the same owner? I mean, there, there's obviously a reason that Chris doesn't want to, you know, like, I guess I have a question.
Chris, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, please, come on.
Sure.
No.
Three minutes?
No, you have longer than that.
Well, you can have more than that.
We're asking you questions.
I got seven handouts, so who can share?
Who's gonna share?
Judy and I will share.
Can we share?
Look at that.
I'll get it sharing.
Oh, he's wanting to.
I told Judy she'd get two. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Chris Till. I've lived in town for twenty years, which is surprising. I feel like I'm a newcomer, but I came here twenty years ago. And I'm here to advocate for flag lots. I believe that flag lots should be explicitly permitted in the zoning code. Allowing flag lots would create instantly more, potentially more buildable lots in the village. It would allow a natural population increase without having to crack the eggshell above the village limits. And perhaps, maybe some people would be nice and build some affordable houses in, on their flag lots. The handout actually is a textbook example of a flag lot, and it's my house. Um, as you can see, for whatever reason, that neighborhood was split up into twenty-five-foot sections eighty or ninety years ago. Phil Hawke, he told me, he thought maybe they were originally gonna build.
More than that.
Row houses there or something like that, who knows? So we got a huge yard. It's, it's seventy-five by one sixty-two, so it's, it's over twelve thousand square feet. It's nice to have such a big yard, but we don't use it. We've got a little piece of the back fenced in for the kids to use. And, and, and this, what I'm proposing i- is, I, I know Denise had some various examples of flag lots. This would be sort of like a textbook example of a flag lot, what I'm proposing. I don't know if everyone can see the, you know, it's something like this where there's twenty-foot frontage off the street where it's, where it's resurveyed, it's replatted. And then twenty-foot access off the street leading to the, the larger lot in the back. I'm sure everyone already knows what a flag lot is, but just to be clear, uh, it, it's an unusually shaped lot. As Ted said, lots can be any size. Typically, they're rectangular though. But a flag lot has a, it's shaped like a flagpole because there's a little piece of frontage to the street and then a big spot in back. Now, it could be done with easements. Sure, I'm a lawyer. I'll write up an easement. Great, no problem. But the prac- I think, uh, in practicality, I, you know, I was involved, called in, people fight over easements. Neighbors have problems. Someone wants to put a fence up over the easement. Well, the guy who won't, he can put a fence there. It just, he creates hassles. So the number one idea would be to, uh, you know, just replant it and create an actual flag lot, not, not easements and whatnot. What I'm proposing here, i- it satisfies everything in the zoning code except minimum lot frontage. And my reading of the zoning code is exactly what Ted's is. It's not tricky what it says about minimum lot frontages. It's, it's, it's plain. Uh, but what I'm proposing here, it satisfies the minimum lot size. Each lot would be over six thousand square feet. It satisfies all the front and the side setback issues. Now, there's some particulars when you really get down to think about it, you know, that, that's a little bit complicated. In general, I think some people are probably already favored. They're like, great, let's do it. We get more lots. Maybe somebody will build some affordable houses. Maybe not, but we, we can do some building in town. But there's some funky little details that, that you all will, will discover, uh, with, uh, especially setback issues. Uh, how, how is a setback measured? You know, on my lot, well, what I'm proposing here, if you can, a little crosshatched little area down there, that's, you know, that's what it's thirty-two by thirty-eight feet or something like that. Just a proposed building footprint, but, um.
That's what would be allowed?
Yeah, well, it's smaller than allowed, but you, you just see where is the front setback measured from or the rear setback?
Yeah.
It's more like a, now a perpendicular lot.
Hmm.
And, and you, you want it to make sense. You don't want to be forced into reading your front and back setbacks from the street. Then you get this funny little, you know, long rectangular shaped thing, so. Whoever, Chris, if he's gonna be the one that writes this code, it's kind of complicated how you're gonna write in setbacks. How setbacks are measured. I, I'm not proposing changing any of the setbacks. The idea would be to, 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 to change the absolute minimum of the zoning codes. You're not rewriting it. You're not rewriting the setbacks, all this stuff. It's, it's the minimum, it, it's the access lane. You can call it minimum, minimum frontage, but it's, it's that access lane. How wide does it have to be?
Off the street.
Off the street, yeah. I mean, driveways are typically maybe twelve or fourteen feet or something like that. You want, you know, utilities want a few feet coming in off there, so okay, you want at least fifteen or seventeen feet, something like that. I did mine twenty because I thought, well, people aren't gonna argue with it as much. And that's what actually fits here to satisfy the setbacks off my existing garage right here. Now, I think this should be put in the, in the zoning code explicitly because landowners have to have reasonable expectations of what they can do with their property. I talked to Doug Sutton, a big surveyor around here, and, you know, it costs him, it would cost a landowner about a thousand, two thousand dollars to get their land resurveyed and replatted. So you don't want people just doing that and finding out, oh, no, you can't build it. Uh, so I, I think it's more than just landlocked lots that need to be addressed. Certainly, those are the obvious ones that need to be addressed. But, but it's not just, uh, but not just landlocked lots. There is, besides the examples that Denise provided, I mean, the main example of a flag lot in town here is on Orton Street. I mean, the Brunsmann's property is a classic flag lot, you know? Um, and it's gorgeous, but unfortunately, I don't have.
There are some others too. Well, I, I'd like to say as a councilperson and as a councilperson working on housing. You know, one of the things we're going to be looking at, counsel, I mean, the Housing Advisory Board is gonna be coming to counsel recommending some strategies. Well, we already have been, we, the village government, planning, has been making accessory dwelling units more, uh, e- easily available to people. I want to suggest that Planning Commission take on studying the issue of flag lots. You know, the pros and the cons and what it would look like, because that would be another strategy to increase the, well, like Chris was saying. And it's a, not something we're gonna do tonight.
So when you say flag lots, you're meaning to decrease the minimum frontage?
To have a, I, I, I'm, I'm not an attorney and I'm not a zoning expert, but clearly, there must be a way to have in the code the ability for people to do flag lots, just like this, just like the other one. I don't know how it would be done, but there must be something that's not too, too difficult. But that's not the point, how difficult it is. The point is, do we want it? What are the pros? What are the cons? Is that, does it make sense for this to be a strategy? And I don't know, it seems like planning, this is some, this is, Planning Commission might be the place to be looking at that.
Well, Planning Commission, I, I would have to make a, I think, a detailed argument for if we were to bring that, pass that on to council to put into our zoning code, because I, I really wouldn't want this to be something that surprised people.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying. This is, we're not solving this tonight. We're not solving it this month.
I know, but like, what I'm saying is that the, you know, if we do all this work, all I'm saying is that, that it wouldn't just be a tax amendment. It would be like a more, it.
It's a study.
Yeah. Yeah, more robust, um, uh, recommendation, because this would, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely not opposed to it on face value, um, yet. I don't, but there is a lot of, um. You know, people have been making replating decisions based on this for years. And to change the zoning code in this way, it could be a very easy text amendment to make, but, um, it's a big change.
Well, I'll, you know, I would go back to, zoning has, zoning regulations are based on community intent for what they want, right? So I personally think I'm all in favor of creating flag lots in any district personally. So I'm not trying to argue against that. What I'm trying to argue for is we have a zoning code that's written, it's established, it's new. It has community buy-in. It has fire protection buy-in. It has emergency vehicle buy-in. It has trash delivery, you know, pickup buy-in. It has water utilities and sewer buy-in. It has all these elements that consider why a lot has frontage and why it exists. Those, those things are what drives the intent of zoning. It's not affordable housing, right? It's not being able to cram more crap into the bag. That's not the intent. I'm not saying it shouldn't be, because I think our code really breaks a lot of those barriers that other zoning codes don't do. And we have done a great job of getting community buy-in to get it to where it is. And my only fear is that we've, we've seen a little bit of it tonight. You know, it's, we've gotten buy-in and we've got a pass, and how, how much can we push that envelope one more step? Do I think that this would get through? Probably so. Um, I think it's a great idea, but, you know, there are some issues, you know, relative to trash collection and, you know, all of the emergency vehicle access, all those things.
Well, also, if you're putting a house back there, right, like, the houses that are built next door have, they have an understanding of what the lots are around them and where windows are going to be and stuff like that. I think privacy is a, is a big thing for this.
That's the other issue around creating setbacks.
You know, if you're not facing your house towards the street, where are you facing it?
I can cut up this lot different ways. We could cut it up so, i- i- if that's a concern, I'll cut it up so it faces the street. And there's, it, there's a, there's.
No, you're cutting it up to face the back of your house.
Yeah, but you know, we, we, I don't think we should get into the arguments. This is a, this is a big issue. Yeah.
It is a big issue, and I have, I, like, these are for real examples. I mean, real-time examples. Um, with the Exhibit D, I mean, I get calls, I'll, I'll get a call again from Exhibit D after this meeting, wondering what is the decision on that? And on what I'm hearing is, it's possible in that case, uh, if they go for a variance for the two and a half feet, that they might be able to then carve off sixty feet or fifty-seven feet and, and create a lot in the back.
Yeah, within the zoning code as it stands now, yes.
Right, but, you know.
But with that, with a variance.
But having a variance. Yeah, with a, with a variance.
Shooting that down, I don't know.
If I could address Rose's concern of privacy, well, I, I could conditionally build an accessory dwelling back there, and I don't think that makes a difference which way that's planted. The downside of accessory dwellings for me is I don't think I'm gonna be able to get that loan.
Yeah.
You know, I could get the loan, condition on selling my house. I mean, what we want to do is sell our house and build a house back there and live in that one.
Yeah.
But, you know, accessory dwelling's great, but I don't think I'm gonna be able to get, get the loan. And, and as far as the, the entire, the code not involving affordable housing, I was in the.
Let me, let me make a mention of that. Um, I think that there are more flexible ways to get, it's basically like a con- a land contract. So you can, you can still own a single property. You can have a land contract on a portion of that property on a single family and still maintain that ownership and get by some of those recs for, for financing. And financing isn't on our plate.
Sure, I understand.
But there are options there. I just don't want to, you know.
Right. I, I did want to add on to what you were saying about, uh, I was on the Planning Commission as a, was an auxiliary member during the, when the zoning code was rewritten a few years ago. And affordable housing was part of the conversation when, uh, the, the frontages were cut down. That was due to, well, people built smaller houses when there was no minimum size put on houses. That, part of that concern was affordable housing. Lot sizes were cut down. I mean, it wasn't just for affordable housing, but it was certainly part of the conversation with, with the code that we had. Anyway, i- i- it's a lot of wor- I would say maybe, uh, you know, just do residential B. You know, maybe, maybe not the whole village, just sneak it in on one of the.
You know, I think one way around this, you know, in terms of handling, it's like this whole street on Allen where you've got one seventeen, one seventeen, one seventeen, and our minimum frontage is sixty feet, you know, that's, that's counterproductive as far as what we should have looked at on our minimum frontages. You know, I think our intent originally was to be able to take those large lots and be able to carve two of them out of almost every district. You know, so if our code said, if, if we had a tax amendment that said minimum frontages in residency was forty-five feet. Or forty feet, you know, period, in, in all districts, or B and, A and B, then we might get a little more buy-in and solve some of these problems, not all of them. But that would be a lot easier to manage, you know, from our end to make a recommendation for council than trying to create accessory lanes. Uh, because that whole review to me is, is really, there's a lot of layers that we have to get by, you know, in our report to council. And those, you know, include services and access and setbacks and all of that stuff. We have to detail each one of those and then really get specific about why we think that's a good idea.
So, um, Denise, is that, do you see any more that Planning Commission can do tonight to address any of these?
No, not tonight.
Okay.
I, I mean, it's, it is, it's a discussion. It's just, I wasn't expecting to get a total answer to all this because it's complicated. But, but I wanted, you know, see just all the different kinds of examples that I'm getting and, um, how I interpreted the code.
Well, we can certainly add it to our agenda. I mean, not let the thing drop off, you know, but continue to put it on our agenda for discussion and maybe, you know, look at it a little deeper. Each, each meeting to, to possibly get at least some solution quickly and.
What you just talked about, just decreasing the front requirements and what the ramifications would be about that would be.
Right.
I'd certainly be interested in hearing more about that.
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, I, I'm all for flag lots. I mean, you know, so what? I mean, that, that's my personal thing, but that has nothing to do with me sitting on this board representing, you know, the community. I mean, that's, that's a different interpretation of a code.
So with, um, and then I'll wrap this up. So with, um, Ex- Exhibit C and, or Exhibit B and Exhibit D. I understood what you said about a variance on Exhibit D. Um, Exhibit B, they pretty much could go ahead. The interesting thing about that lot in the back is that lot is not the requirement for, um, residential A, but we have. residential A, but we have something in the zoning code that says, if there was a lot, even though it's non-conforming to the code, if it exists before the code, and you can meet all the setbacks and lot coverage, you can still build on it. So, um, so he'd have to have, but what you're saying, the way I'm interpreting is this, he'd have to have 20 feet, because it'd be 10 on each side, he'd have to have 20, a 20-foot wide easement of a lane that goes back at all points. Have, it couldn't be any less than 20 feet.
Yeah.
For residential A, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
I don't interpret it as you can create an access easement to a lot off of a right-of-way.
We're saying with a triangle going back, and then the minimum would be 20 feet.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
That you could do one of those.
Yeah.
Well, he could actually, if he had the room in the front, he could actually, uh, not even make it an access easement, he could make it its own lot.
Right.
Yeah.
But let's say he doesn't wanna make it an access easement, or he doesn't wanna make his own lot because he has stuff up here he still wants to have control over. He could, he could still go in, he could still go to the 60 feet and narrow, but he has to narrow no less than 20 feet, because side yard setbacks are 10. And it has to be double, is what you're saying. Is that what you're saying?
I think it's the, the driveway with, when you find it down.
Yeah, it would be 20 feet because of the side, um, setbacks.
We don't have any driveway requirements.
It would be the side setbacks, 10 and 10, yeah.
It's not a driveway, it, there isn't an easement or an access term in that. It's a property line that meets the setbacks within that property line.
But she's saying, if he, if he doesn't wanna split it off into a separate lot, then the easement would have to be what?
No, if he doesn't want to separate it off as a separate lot, then he could have a land contract for an accessory dwelling unit on that property to be able to then show a bank for how that thing is separate in ownership and responsibility for financing.
But this is a separate lot on B?
That was getting confusing for me.
Just an access easement to the lot behind the red, um, lot on B?
No, I, I mean, I, I just don't, he's gotta have 60 foot on Livermore, that shape, whatever, from 60 feet down to 20 feet.
Okay, that's where, I get the 60 feet, the 20 feet, where'd you come up with the 20?
The 20 feet is two, it's two property lines that have the satisfaction of side yard setbacks.
But if we're doing it, if, if they wanted an access easement, it would be the same requirements?
I don't, it, to me, it's a separate property. It, it's, it's, an access easement is a shared joint agreement between two property owners for access to, to two properties.
Yeah.
You can't create a property, you can't create a lot without frontage.
But it's a, it's an existing lot, it's an existing.
Yeah, in this case, he's going back to an existing lot.
An existing landlocked lot.
That, to me, is a non-conforming piece of green space.
Well, but what about the Corey Street?
But, but.
Well, we're talking about Livermore.
Well, Livermore, I mean, but, but.
That's what they do on, get on Corey Street, is just have 20 feet go back on an access easement to this other separate lot, A and B. They wanna do the same thing they did with A to B.
Yeah.
Just the 20 feet out to Livermore.
See, I don't know, I mean, myself, I, myself, I would interpret how to create the lot, this is Exhibit A, if, if you did, the minimum lot is 40 feet. It's 40 feet in, in this district. So you take 108 and 74, that's 180, and divide that in three, and you've got three lots that you could divide off of Corey Street to get that configuration to work without an access easement or anything.
But it's already been done.
They have an access easement.
Well, I'm, I'm, how that happened, I can't tell you. I, I'm just trying to tell you how I interpret.
And all I say, since they did it already for Corey Street, it seems like they should build them to do it on.
Yeah.
I think that's a real mistake. I mean, yeah, I mean, and you, that, that's a problem. I think that's a legal problem.
Chris, do you have any thoughts about that?
Uh, well, again, I would just make the point that you, that you raised, Rose, which is the, there's a difference between replating to create another lot and when there's already a landlot.
But, but this is, in both cases, A and B, we have landlocked, landlocked.
Existing ones.
Lots, existing lots.
So on Livermore.
And A, an access easement was grant, was developed, granted, whatever, approved. So it seems to me that B, we should approve that for B.
But is B one lot, the way it's, the way I see that, that has to be.
No, it's, it's not that.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, 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 yes.
All right, that was my fault.
No, actually, I didn't label, I didn't label them, I should've.
Yeah, we're talking about this tiny little lot at the back of the red lot, having, having access to Livermore Street. It's owned by the same owner who wants to grant that other lot access without replating.
Now, I would say that in, back in the day, folks bought lots and dedicated green space easements on those lots, where a lot of these little islands are. They were intended to be common, shared green space. Okay, that was, and Yellow Springs is all about that. So, you know, during a period of time, creating these green space easements in backyards was the thing to do. And so there was access easements that literally allowed that to be shared amongst property owners that were contiguous to that piece of property. Now, so we have to make sure that there is a deed, there is not a deed restriction on that parcel being shared access to the neighbors that touch that parcel.
Yeah.
That first and foremost, before we could, no matter what we say, but we have to make sure that that is in fact not the case. And then from there, see what happens, but it wouldn't surprise me if there's a green space.
But, well, those properties are co-owned, I believe, those green space properties.
They can be.
Yeah, but there might be an easement on them.
Yeah.
So that they can't be built on.
Because what, what happened is you had these estate lots, and then you had smaller lots built up around the estate lots, and the person who owned the estate dedicated that, that parcel of land to the.
The lot, um, just west of me, that, um, east, east of, of my property has shared lots in the middle.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
That's not this case.
So, but we don't know if it's, if it, there might be a deed restriction on it.
So, question. Clearly, not gonna arrive at any kind of conclusive answer for Denise, but would the response you would be comfortable with be that this property owner would probably need to come before Planning Commission so that you could make a determination as to whether you would grant an exception, you would need to see a deed registry? I mean, I think Denise has left with no answers whatsoever. So would it be to return before this body and have some of those questions answered? Because clearly, they don't wanna wait for a zoning code change several years down the road.
How does, uh, access easement, you can grant that, correct? We don't have to do that.
I think Denise is thrashing about with that, because you've had some pretty major difference of opinion about.
Usually what happens.
And, and the, the interpretation of that has been interpreted different ways.
Okay.
I mean, the way it's not, it maybe, um, maybe just by fixing the statement, or making it a little more clear, um, would help.
Well, there's some, there, you know, the, the downside of this is that there is precedent, and, and the precedent is every place but Yellow Springs, because that's how it's interpreted. I mean, I fought this battle for 40 years and have come up with unbelievably creative ways to make a goofy lot, to, to build on things, um, and take a lot of pride in that creativity. But it's always with a fight. You know, and but for the fact that I have that, those specific rules about what is, you know, the frontage, the setbacks, the rear yard, whatever they are, you just have to show compliance to those things in order to get approval, and they can't say no, because then it becomes illegal, becomes a takeaway.
Denise, did you grant the access easement on Exhibit A? Is that what happened?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not comfortable saying, oh, well, that was a mistake, sorry, so we're not gonna do B. To me, it seems like if we did A, we granted that, we should grant B.
Well, I mean, I mean, I got legal, illegal opinion based on what, how we were governing that co, because, and, um, and, but as I tried to apply it to other things, it didn't quite.
But this, there's, this is the same.
And so, I mean, there's nothing from, preventing us from stopping and not going any further until we clearly clarify what that means, that section of the code.
I think there's a, I think there's a difference between existing landlocked lots and.
I agree.
And creating a new one, and I think.
I mean, I agree.
I think what you, I don't think that A was a mistake.
But if you're interpreting it all the same, based on what, like Ted is saying, then, then that didn't have, I mean, that had, that had enough frontage on the, on Corey that mirrored what was on the landlocked lot, and that's how I was, understood it. Okay, now, if instead, it has to have its own, the front, one in the front has to have 40 plus 40 for the back, then that's a different interpretation than what I understood so far. And, and so, I think we just need to clarify that as we move forward, because I don't want to, just because we did one, doesn't mean we can't just stop and say, let's get this right, or we're just gonna keep going.
Does the easement extend and then go like that, is what, sort of what you're talking about? Like, if you need 60 feet right here? Like, if it were to go like this?
So, this have, this has frontage, this has the 60 on it. However wide you wanted to make it, it goes back, because it doesn't matter, because it have the 60 on the front, as long as it said the 60 on the back, which it does.
So how, how do you wanna get it clarified?
I think, Chris, maybe we could do some more legal data, or do?
Well, that, that's fine.
I mean, I don't know, I mean.
If, if the commission wants a formal legal opinion, let's do that. I mean, I think that's the clearest way to accomplish the clarity that I think everyone wants. And then, to the extent that there, there's some uncertainty with that, then it becomes a, a code interpretation. And, uh, and I would also say that I think that, that most of you know that when interpreting zoning codes, it's, it's a derogation to the rights of the property owner. So, um, and given some of the interest in what the village wants to do vis-à-vis infill affordable housing, I mean, ultimately, it, these policy decisions are made by the administrative bodies and the elected officers, not the lawyer.
You know, and it might just be something as simple as, you know, putting a period after, have frontage on approved public street, period, and then go into, if you're gonna do it on this, on these other things, then what is that supposed to look like? I mean, maybe just a little more of an explanation on those private streets or, or access easements, maybe stronger clarification of how that's interpreted, separated out a little bit, but still be in that same section of the code. Okay, all right.
Okay, moving on.
Because of the time, I think I'm gonna start to defer.
Yeah, I think we should defer the tiny discussion.
So why is, is Sheldon, I can go before the BZA though, for a non-conform lot? Right? There's nothing to answer, so, I'm not complying, I'm just, I'm just clarifying, nothing's been answered tonight.
Nothing's been answered tonight, yes.
Um, I'm not hearing that for BZ, I would say, I thought BZA was just for dimensional provisions of like, you know, small dimensional, that's why I thought that, one, Exhibit A.
Yeah, I mean, if you're asking for a variance through BZA, typically it's a foot or two off of what the standard says. BZA isn't going to waive the, well, how they interpret frontage. Could be completely different than the way that we interpret frontage.
So if I do this as a formal proposal, do I come back to you guys or do it with the BZA?
To change the zoning code or to get your lot?
Non-conform.
I, I would see.
A non-conform lot, so I can do it.
I think you start with the zoning administrator and go from there.
But what is he coming to meet for? I mean, there's nothing I can do right now with the way it is, it's pretty 25 foot.
Well, I mean, if he submits, if he submits a proposal to the village, it's your job to deny that proposal. Then it's your job to look at what avenues he has to get variance on that denial, and that is in fact BZA, it's not Planning Commission.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
But we're gonna continue to talk about flag lots.
Yes.
Yes.
Be careful with easements, 'cause people are gonna wanna do funnel-shaped easements. They go, and they're gonna play nice and just do a straight easement, why can't they do funnel-shaped easements on the street?
Yeah, easements are, are kind of problematic.
You know.
Correct.
But the, but, but my understanding of BZA is that that's gonna be, that's so big that, you know, they might, they might grant a little foot here.
Oh, I don't think that he'll get approval. I mean, that's, that's my own thing.
But, I mean, it would be interesting for, to, for us, working on what we're working on, if we're gonna work on this, if, what BZA would say to that. I mean, it's his right to go before them.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, okay, so, uh, do we want to adjourn?
I'll bring, I'm gonna bring those back later.
Okay.
Are the other ones?
Yes.
Um, do we have a motion, can I move to adjourn?
You asked for a motion. Do we wanna do agenda planning first, or did we do it?
Not do agenda planning, so we're gonna add, we're gonna add those items, uh, back on again?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
It's not say we're recreating for agenda the, all the old business.
Yeah.
That didn't get done.
Well, including minimum.
Including minimum.
We're gonna talk about that again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and did, real quick, though, did any, did anybody have any update on the review as the comprehensive land use plan that, did you do?
Ken just done some work, I'm trying to get my school year.
Okay, all right, so, you can come back, just let us know when you wanna have another meeting, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Awesome, okay. So all, all of those four things are gonna be on Old Business again next meeting, which is next month.
Is there any new business? Anybody has any new business?
No one has any new business for next meeting? All right, okay.
I have a question, a procedural question. The Antioch proposal that they gave us, was their intent to get some kind of preliminary reaction from us on where we may stand on that? I know I do that when I submit projects for clients, if they're really questionable.
No, actually, the Housing Advisory Board just thought it might be a good idea for you guys to see it a little bit ahead of time, but they're gonna be bringing this as a pocket neighborhood development. They're gonna be the first ones to actually.
I mean, was there anyone from Antioch here?
Well, tonight, no, 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 we just, Kevin McRuder sent that.
It was just a communication.
It was just a communication.
That's cool.
But it'll be the first pocket neighborhood development.
Congratulations, Ted, you're a little baby.
I love it.
No, we have not adjourned yet. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A baby?
I move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.